And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the December 3rd, 2018 Board of Selectmen's Meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, we have a request to accept a donation, we have Town Administrator's Update, at 7:00 we have a public hearing for a logging permit, then we have a resignation letter to accept, and then we need to concur with an appointment to the Special Events Committee, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we will have an executive session at the end. Priscilla, do you have any?
No.
Chase?
No.
I've got a couple here. Par Plaza is having their grand opening in ribbon cutting Saturday, this Saturday, December 8th, 2 to 5. There'll be the ribbon cutting ceremony, opportunities to meet the staff and tour the facilities, Santa himself will be there, and Cornerstone Bank will be taking and printing pictures. Guests are welcome to bring their dog and children to this fun event. There will be refreshments, snacks, beverages, and exciting giveaways. And that's one river road. Okay, and then we have this from the St. John Paul Second Parish in Southbridge, they'll be sponsoring their annual medieval Christmas feast on the second weekend of December. The dinner is prepared by a professional caterer, feature entertainment from start to finish, in the context of a late medieval castle banquet with singing, hanging of the greens, procession of the boar's head, and flaming pudding. Of special interest is the court jester whose humor brings both laughter and joy to this holiday observance. Similar to a Renaissance fair but in a sacred context, these dinners are sure to put you in the Christmas spirit. So they have them Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this coming weekend at 6:00 p.m. The cost is $30 per person. Okay. And we also have an opening on the Housing Partnership, so if anyone is interested in joining, please send an email to the Town Administrator. Okay. Okay, and then we have this donation Ted.
Matt's actually here.
Oh, would you like to come up, sir, please?
Thanks for alluding to time.
Okay, oh, could you please sit and use the microphone? It's for the people at home.
Sure.
It's being televised.
You've got to take care of those people at home.
That's right. We can hear you, but they wouldn't be able to.
Sure.
So could you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Matthew Micali, and I'm here on behalf of the Housing Partnership Committee and Bethlehem Church. I'm a member of both. This has in regard to a $250 donation being made by Bethlehem Church and to the Housing Partnership Committee. At this point, there are two objectives in Bethlehem making the donation. That is to help the committee get to full operating status as soon as possible, so that affordable housing might be provided as soon as possible. And to let people know that Bethlehem does this in the hope of motivating others to give of their time and talent. I noted that there is a vacancy, as I well know, in the committee. It would be great to have another person.
Yes.
Join in. And I hope you'll accept the donation.
Yes, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the generous gift of $250 from Bethlehem Lutheran Church to the Housing Partnership. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
Now, will Barbara have to set up a special account for that?
We have a gift account. We have a gift account for that.
It's not a separate one for that?
There'd be more specific use for this. Each gift, you had your own for specific.
Has a special purpose and.
Yeah, because I know like the rec department does too.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask that we send a letter to Bethlehem Lutheran Church thanking them for the gift.
Certainly. Okay, Ted, can you?
We can do that.
Right. It's double sided, I'm getting lost, but it saves.
I'm in too.
But it saves paper.
I am too. I was looking for it. Where'd it go?
Okay, next we have Town Administrator's Update.
Okay. The first is the monthly land use meeting I did at 10 this last week, which is the various permitting departments that discuss the projects that are going on town, and which I think is a very, very useful meeting that these individuals do get together and talk about projects and any issues they have, and how they can try to work better to get things resolved, which is really very good. And as a matter of fact, at the meeting, Mr. Felchek brought up an issue that, or brought up an item that I guess is in the Boston Business Journal, there was a little story about Sturbridge and about how much, I think it was their barbecue business, was saying how much Sturbridge has improved in working with businesses over the last four or five years. And I think a lot of this has to do with this group getting together and helping out. So it was very nice, because it was a nice article in the journal, either Worcester Business or Boston Business Journal, monthly paper, so it was good.
Well, I know BT's won the best barbecue in the state.
True, but it was also indicated, I guess several years ago, it was difficult to get to have things done. But now it seems to be much easier for the businesses to do more with the town government, which is always nice to hear.
Let's frame that article.
Okay, I'll get that. Good idea.
Show it to the nonbelievers.
Let's put it on the website, reprint it.
Next, I attended a meeting last week at Worcester, the Central Massachusetts MPO Program, and I just slept and Supranat came to the meeting as well with me. Some of the items that were discussed have to do with the future transportation plan and such like sidewalks. We also had an opportunity to talk to a representative for the state DOT on the trails program that the town had been trying to get some federal funding. Selectmen Supranat had talked about, he had talked previously to some other people from the state, and that we're trying to determine where exactly this grant is and how we can try to get it to move. And so we found out that it's actually in Washington DC, in a federal department that's reviewing it. And hopefully, if that was completed, that we're, you might see some results on that sooner than later.
Yeah, because it's been quite a while.
I did follow up with Representative Neal's office, and I haven't heard back from them, but I'm hoping to hear from them and hopefully we'll get some help from them to get that through. That was the MCO meeting, so that was useful. Last week, I also attended the Public House's historic and grand opening, and that was a very nice occasion. It was Mary Darling, as well as Chairman Mary Blanchard and myself, and Michael Supranat, where we were there. And it was just a very beautiful place. It's quite a place.
Beautiful.
Very nice for a town of Sturbridge, just very proud to have such a lovely business, you know, so that was a good event. And we have a note, I believe you saw in the package, that the Planning Board would like to have a joint meeting with this board, and have given us some dates, and you should have that in your package. And I think she talked about either on the 8th or the 22nd, and asked, you know, if they would prefer to either come to us or to go to them. Do you have, the board have any thoughts on that?
Well, the thought on the 22nd was the 21st is.
A holiday.
A holiday, so we don't meet, so we'll be meeting on the 22nd instead.
Normally, yeah.
And they meet, so if we meet with them, it'll be one night as opposed to two separate meetings. And whether we go there or they come here, you know, we can decide.
That sounds good to me.
Yes.
Combining it like that.
Makes a lot of sense. That was a suggestion of the Planning Board Chair, and I take it it's a suggestion of our chair, so it makes a lot of sense.
What's the resolution? 22nd?
22nd.
Is that going to be with them or us?
Well, why don't we invite them here? This is a big hall, you know.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I get that clear.
You know.
That's good.
Whoever has a shoe at a meeting can go first. Get the meeting out of the way.
Sounds good. And the last thing is town hall, holiday hours, and we just spoke last meeting, I think it was, about the Thanksgiving hours, and it actually, I think it came up that we might be doing for Christmas and New Years. And I also discussed this with Barbara Berry, who said that in the past, the practice here has been for the town to close a half a day on Christmas Eve, if it's during, you know, during regular week hours, and to be open all day on New Year's Eve. So I just, I spoke to the chairman, and she asked if I'd bring it up for the board tonight to discuss, so what's your pleasure?
I had told Ted I didn't know it was customary to do that.
I neither. That's the first I heard this.
Well, it's up to you.
So what's feelings?
Really is your decision, so.
Is there a half a day for just Christmas Eve?
Christmas Eve was a half a day.
I do recall.
I'm asking Ted, just Christmas Eve?
That's what I was told.
Not for New Years?
That's what I was told.
And New Years would be a full workday?
That's what the practice has been in the past, you can change it, you can.
I have no problem with just Christmas Eve. I don't have a problem giving a half a day for Christmas Eve.
Now, what about all the other departments?
Yeah, that's the problem.
DPW and library?
I think it's just the town hall hours.
Yeah, it is just town hall and center office.
That's all I was aware of.
Because they're also going to miss their long day.
Yep.
On Tuesday with Christmas.
I can see the library and the senior center, you know, any non-emergency, really, that's not, well, union, you really have to keep it open, you know, unless it's in a contract, unless their contract calls for a half a day, if it doesn't call for it, then you, when it's right.
Can't get it.
But non-union departments or non-emergency, I think is, it'd be okay.
So is this going to be across the board, like library, senior center, everybody? I think it's tough on the senior center, personally, a lot of those seniors.
That's fine. It's really a board decision. It's not, I'm just adjusting.
Town hall, I'm okay with town hall.
Okay.
Center office building.
And I think that's what the practice was in the past.
That's it.
But the chairman asked if we, other departments, and I said, it's possible, I think you could do it, but that's up to the board.
I'm just thinking that the senior center, some of these folks, that's all they have.
The dinner.
And they get there and they stay for the afternoon, or, you know, they go home at 3:00, whatever time it closes, and it's just kind of a tough time of year for a lot of people. I'm not sure that I agree with the closing the senior center at 12:00. Library, I think they can do their own thing, but senior center, I'm not sure. My motion is just town hall and center office building for a half a day on Christmas Eve only.
So is that a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion that the town hall and center office building work a half a day on Monday, December 24th.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, discussion.
What about, I just want to say that I do recall Leon, and I also think Sean, giving half days on Christmas Eve. I have a recollection, I know of Leon doing it.
He had a better memory than me.
I definitely recall that. I just wanted to know, I really don't think many people on Christmas Eve afternoon go to the library, you know, and I think it's a nice opportunity, a good opportunity to let those staff also, you know, be with their family. I think a lot of families are starting to travel wherever they're going, or they're home baking, or they're visiting relatives. I don't think many say, let's go get another book at the library today. So I would be inclined to add the library to the list of closed at the half day. I appreciate Selectman Gimis' point about the senior center, but I don't think those concerns are shared with the library, so.
Does anybody have the quick calendar, the town calendar for December?
It's on a Tuesday. It's on a Tuesday.
Yeah, well, just to see what is scheduled at the senior center on that day. I have trouble with the new setup on the town calendar. You have to click to so many things, and then when you go and get the date, like today, it had every single thing that's being done at the senior center, so it's very hard to find just board meetings. So maybe they can get another, what do you call it, link to just senior center, but it should be up for the whole month. Can you get it, Janine?
Yeah, the internet's just a little slow, because I'm on Wi-Fi. Christmas Eve, nothing.
They don't have anything scheduled?
Nothing, yeah.
So they must.
But do we know that's accurate?
I don't know.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, do they have things listed for the day after Christmas?
Yes.
You do have a second, you have another meeting on the 15th, 17th?
Do they do a special Christmas holiday meal, maybe the day before?
They do it earlier.
Do they do it on a Monday?
It's on the 20th.
Oh, they do have a Christmas party scheduled.
It's scheduled for the 20th.
They have lunches there, right?
Yeah.
I'm sure that's what you're concerned about.
They have, that's my concern, and also they have the lunches for the Meals on Wheels. So if they shut down half a day, what happens to that? And for some of these folks, that's it. That's all they get.
How about after, you know, the lunch and then Meals on Wheels is finished?
They want to close at 2:00, I'm fine with that, but.
Something like that, you know, once that's completed.
Yeah, once it's done.
Yeah, I mean, they close at 3:00, so 2:00 is not going to hurt, but they have to provide the lunches.
That would be reasonable, I think.
Well, okay, so we're closing the whole town, basically?
Not the police department or the fire department or anything.
Or the DPW.
Not yet, anyway.
Well, safety, yes, they open, unfortunately, it always seems there's snow these days.
No snow this year.
Have we ever closed all these places before? I don't think so.
I have no idea.
Can we move forward with Selectman Gimis' motion, and then we can look into the senior center situation for our next meeting?
You could probably come back.
I seconded that motion. I'm going to make another one after that.
Yeah, we were just taking discussion.
Yeah, that was discussion.
Okay, any more discussion on that motion?
No.
Okay, you have it down, Janine?
This for the town hall and the center office.
Yeah, the Cobb.
Okay.
It does not have the library.
I'm going to make another motion on that.
This motion does not have the library or the senior center.
Just town hall and Cobb building.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? All opposed?
I was in favor.
Oh, slow.
Yeah.
You only raised a hand this much.
I'm going to make a motion that we close the library consistent with the center hall and office building early on Christmas Eve as well.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, 5 to 0.
And maybe we should check with the seniors.
Well, just going to.
Yeah, because I think Priscilla's compromise is good. I mean, 2:00 is still pretty early to get out and do your own thing.
It sounds, based on just looking at the calendar, it sounds like they don't have anything scheduled.
Yeah.
But for some people, they'll go there for lunch and, you know, Meals on Wheels.
Yeah, but I mean, they don't even have lunch listed.
Well, they got to do some, I mean, some of these folks.
Oh, I know they rely on it.
No, they, they're hurting because they don't have a meal, they hopefully have some from the day before, but for some people, it's difficult.
Social interactions.
It's very, and this holiday season is very hard for a lot of people, especially some of the elderly as well, who are alone and whatever, and even hours of interaction is still better than nothing.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, you know, at the senior center, I know most of the time Meals on Wheels comes back in very, very early, like, you know, 12, 12:30, they've made all their deliveries, provided, you know, everybody's in and delivering. Sometimes if somebody can't make it, it takes a little bit longer, but as long as everybody makes their deliveries.
We can check on the.
They're usually done by 12, 12:30.
I'll bring it up again for the next meeting. And I'll talk to the director about it, so she'll know. It may happen, so that way she'll have a chance to plan for it.
We just need more information.
Correct.
Okay, it's too early for the public hearing, so we can go to the acceptance of the resignation of Stephen Gagnon as Veterans Service Officer. Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved with regret.
Second it. Now, the resignation is for February?
You are, 1st, 2019.
So should we advertise right away to replace?
Can I bring, are you going to, I assume you wanted me to send a letter to thank him for his service?
Yes.
I'll do that. Did you vote for, did you vote on that yet?
No, we didn't.
We haven't voted yet.
I just made a motion.
Discussing.
And Mike, the second, and.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor? Okay, 5 to 0.
Okay, if I could, when he came in and talked to me about the resignation, you know, he had his own personal reasons, it's not job related, that he has an issue with working for Town of Sturbridge, he enjoys working for Town of Sturbridge, but he also pointed out that the position does have a more, you know, well, I guess it's more and more complex all the time, and there's, not only do you have, he has to have opportunities to meet with seniors, but the state also has a lot that you have to fill out, there's recertification every year, and there's more programs that when veterans come in, they may be not only looking for the veteran programs, but they could also be looking for state programs. So he really felt that, you know, at this point, it's a stipend salary once a year, and he tries to come in a couple of days a month, but he thought it might be better for, you know, for the future to consider a part-time position. I know your town is just about 10,000, which the state prefers you have a full-time position, so at this point, you don't really have anything close, but maybe a part-time position about, he suggested maybe 10 hours a week. So he talked to Barbara Berry and I today about this, and we talked about the possibility of finding the funds. We should be able to handle that. It's about $5,200 right now that he gets for a stipend, so it'd be a little over double if you go to 10 hours a week, probably, you know, $10,000 to $12,000 a year. So it's not too, you know, high, but something that the board may want to consider, and if we're going to advertise, they may want to consider at this point advertising, and then we can try to increase those hours, so.
Are there reimbursements from the state to?
For his salary, but just for the benefits. 75% of the benefits are reimbursed to the community, but it's just for the administrative work that we pay for the agent.
And the recommendation by the state is actually for even our amount of residents.
When a community hits 10,000, I think you're right around, you know, maybe just the other.
Yeah.
They recommend a full-time person?
So at least part-time, because right now, it's only twice a month he's coming through.
And 10 hours a week really isn't too extensive, I don't think, if you look for a person at that area.
After the next census, we might have to take a look at that.
Yeah, I think you can also look for, being a part of a district, you know, many communities, small communities do that too, and it's also, you have three or four communities that share a person, and that works well too. That might take a little more time, because you have to find other communities, but for right now, if you want to try to find somebody at part-time would be a start, and then you can develop it maybe next year or the year after. So if the board doesn't have an issue with it, we'll advertise it for 10 hours a week and see how we do.
How's Boyd feeling it?
I support it.
I support it.
Do we have appropriation for that, or?
We will try to, we don't have all there right now, but we'll find ways to try to get a transfer before end of the year.
Okay.
Or my successor will, at the very least.
Yeah, and then put it in the budget for.
But we have funds in there now, so, but we, to go the rest of the year, we probably have to, in the special town meeting, or in the spring town meeting, you can try to transfer.
Okay.
That's it. I think I'm done. I read my little requests and side stories.
No, you might have Stephen kind of outline what he really does, just because if we do get questions about it.
Right.
And I would also like to know all the services worked.
Sure, I'd like to invite, you can invite him to come in if you'd like some time too and talk to the board.
Up to our chair, but I would.
It is more detailed than it usually was, if you'd like in the past, you can ask him to come in. But he actually said he was trying to stay and see if he can overlap, whoever comes in to train a little bit.
I think it's a good idea, and at any event, when it gets put in the budget for being a part-time position instead of a stipend, the finance company is going to ask for that anyway.
I agree.
So I think it's good to have him here and.
Explain it.
Explain it.
We'll do that probably in January, we'll bring him in.
Okay, and then we have a recommendation of an appointment to the Special Events Committee for Kerry Quinn Keery. Any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, we still have five minutes. Okay, old business. Priscilla?
I know I asked this, and I talked with the Town Administrator prior to, but I think it's important for the residents to get the update, because I got questions during the week, and that's why I asked you. So I'm going to ask you again for the public's purpose, on the search committee, your update that you gave me in the beginning of the search committee for the DPW Director's position.
Right. You know, we did have three citizens that put their names in, and two at-large individuals were interested, so right now, I have one more citizen who could not come in until tomorrow, unfortunately, to, because of his job. I spoke to him last week, and he wants to come in and speak to us, and he actually looks like a good candidate. So he'll be in tomorrow, and I'll be able to make a decision and give it to the board by the end of the week, who I think should be on the committee, and by next, I think you have to vote to.
Yeah.
Inform my recommendation, and so I'll be at the next meeting. And then now I also advertise a position, knowing that this is all moving pretty quick, and it was, it's in local papers as well as the Beacon, and it just came, just coming out in the Beacon for December 1st, so no wonder we have the committee coming together at this point in time. I advertised it for the 21st for a deadline, so if the board's ready to, hopefully it will be ready to go middle of December with the board, with the committee, and then we can start working on that replacement right after December 21st.
So the board, so the search committee will have the opportunity to interview all the people and make their recommendation to us, correct?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's the goal.
And just because, again, I was asked this, and I know we talked about it off camera, but I want this for the record, I had residents ask me about if an engineering degree was required, and I see in the ad that it is not, just a bachelor's degree in any content area.
PE, I don't think is required.
Right, okay, so that's how Sturbridge has it then?
Okay, I could be wrong. You know, if I'm wrong on that, does anybody know? Because I think it's not.
No, it's not required in engineering.
I'm trying to go by memory, but I don't think it was required.
It's in the town bylaws, the qualifications required for the DPW Director.
Right, I know, but I don't think, yeah, we also, and if people are interested or wish to contact our office, you know, we also have an online, a job description, which we put together for the position, as you said. I hate to say absolutely no, and then find out I'm wrong, but I don't think there is a PE requirement.
It's definitely not a PE, but.
Thank you.
It may.
You're welcome.
It's in the job description, it's also described in the charter.
In the charter, yes.
Not that it wouldn't be a bad idea.
Wouldn't be a bad idea to have an engineering degree.
Except for the future.
Well.
Now's our chance, right?
Well, because you'd have to change the charter, which.
You have to change a lot.
Even though it's, even though it's considered maybe a small issue, it still would have to go through the town meeting and a ballot question, so.
But always put preferred.
You could put preferred.
You can put consistent with the charter, it doesn't have to be a requirement, but it could be preferred.
That doesn't preclude the committee from trying to find individuals who may have that as an asset, you know, so what's it?
Make it a motion for the search committee to put it preferred?
Well, it's already been advertised.
I don't think you can change the job description at this point, but.
Yeah, right.
That's too bad, because, I mean, it's too bad, but that is what it is.
Well, I mean, even if we don't change the job description.
Can't we tell them?
Can't, we can't have the ad indicate something?
I'd have to re-advertise.
The ad's already out.
The ad's already out.
Is this a paid ad?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, not much in life is free.
It's too bad, because it would have been nice to have an engineering.
It's nice, but as I mentioned to you, Priscilla, a lot of places do not have that requirement, because it's
And a lot do, so.
It's difficult to get someone with that requirement.
It's a good paying job, so it's not like it's not pays, doesn't pay well, it's a good paying job, so it would be nice to see that.
Okay, old business, any more old business, Priscilla?
Nope.
Chase?
I was going to also bring up that subject, but it's kind of been answered now, but kind of to tail-end off of that, it just seems like his retirement is on December 23rd, and our next meeting's not till, what, the?
December 17th.
Seventeenth. Is there any way we can vote on this search committee a little earlier to get the ball in motion? I mean, it's plow season, it just seems like we're kind of a little behind the eight ball by doing that.
You think you'll have the search committee by the 17th? I mean, if we want to do it before that, we'd have to have a special meeting.
Yeah, if you wish a special meeting, I'll be ready, I should be ready middle of the week.
Yeah, I mean.
Just to kind of get the ball moving forward.
Oh, I have no problem if people can make it.
Yeah, what would it be, five minutes?
Yeah, just like we've done with Common Vicks.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want any kind of gap, his role is pretty vital.
You will have a gap.
Especially this time of year.
You will have a gap, you can't help it. You're not going to hire anybody by the 21st of December.
No.
No.
There's no way.
No, no, but we can.
But you can start, yes.
I agree with.
We can appoint the search committee. So you think you'll have it by the end of this week? Well, we have the 12th, 13th, and 14th this week. Anybody have any problems with those days, 13th?
That's not this week.
Please, I mean, the following week.
Next week.
Well, that's right, I'm a week, so we have the 6th, and 7th, and 5th.
The only day this week I can't do it would be the 5th, is that Thursday?
Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the 6th, then.
I could do Wednesday, or I could do Friday, but it would have to be after 10:00, I have an appointment at 8:00.
Maybe Friday will give them a little more time.
I'm tied, I'm tied up all Friday morning, and I don't normally work on Fridays, I mean, you don't necessarily have to have me, but I just, I can't do it in the morning on Friday.
Okay, so that leaves Wednesday or Thursday, and Mary can't do Thursday, you won't be ready by Wednesday.
I'm sorry, I can do the morning, but I will be kind of gone by 10:00, I could do it at like 8:30.
Sure.
That would be good.
Yeah, I looked at Mary.
That would be good, because I have to go to work, too.
It's fine, it's early, it's better.
Yeah, 8:30 sounds good.
So 8:30 Thursday?
Yeah, December 6th.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you can post that, and that'll be the only?
Make sure I don't have, can you go look at my room real quick?
Yeah.
I don't think I have anything here, there's.
End of this last word.
That's at 8:30 a.m.?
Six. Yes.
I get it.
The 6th, Thursday.
Thursday, December 6th, at 8:30 a.m.
And that's just going to be to pick the search committee?
Yeah.
All right, I can do that.
So they can get busy.
We're going to have to appoint an interim, right, DPW?
I would think so.
Director?
I think the Director of Operations would take over.
Yeah, yeah, it's not going to, he's got somebody that's.
It's not going to paralyze us, but I, we do need to get.
Do we need to appoint him as interim, or?
The Director of Operations is there.
He's the operations person, I think he feels he should be okay, I'll talk to Greg some more about it.
Yeah.
Well, that person, if Greg was on vacation, that person would be running the show anyway, correct?
Correct.
And if he, or if he was out sick, so.
Right.
It's no difference.
No difference.
Greg did say he would help, you know, if he needed help.
I'm sure.
I need to talk to him.
Okay, it is a little after 7:00, so we do have, we'll get back to that business, we do have a public hearing.
In accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 132, Section 40 to 46, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Sturbridge will hold a public hearing on the petition of Kevin Scherer for a logging permit for 16.4 acres of land on 169 and Route 175, I'm sorry, not Route, on 169 and 175 Arnold Road, owned by Tweedy McDonald Family LLC. The hearing will be held on Monday, December 3 at 7:00 p.m. at Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, and it's dated November 15, 2018.
Okay, could you please come forward and have a seat, microphones for the people at home, so introduce yourself, and then you could summarize what it is you're going to do.
My name's Kevin Scherer, I'm a consulting forester hired by Art Batson or the Tweedy Family Trust to implement a forest management plan on their property on Arnold Road.
Okay, have you passed in the green cards?
No, I have them right here.
Oh, okay, could you give them to Janey, please?
Yeah.
Okay, and what is it you want to do, cut trees?
Yeah, so we've submitted a forest cutting plan, I haven't had it approved, to harvest some timber off the property. It's approximately 60 acres, the property's approximately 60 acres in size, and we're going to be harvesting 16 of those acres.
Yeah, do you have a copy of the signed plan from the state?
Yes.
Because we usually get that, too.
Sure, I have a few copies, if you'd like.
Oh, please. Yeah, this is, we've got the other, this was just the page I was looking for, Janey. Did anyone else want to see that? It's one we usually get signed by the state.
It's a pretty straightforward harvest, there's access for, it's actually, the property's divided into two by the Mass Pike, that's why there's two address numbers, but there's access on Arnold Road for either one. It was harvested once before that I know of in early 2000s, so there are two log landings that have been used before and two access points. I did walk it with the Conservation Commission, and I don't believe they had any major concerns. There are a few stream, small stream crossings that are dry throughout most of the year, they're, like, everything right now, it's pretty wet, so we're going to wait until winter, until it freezes up. A lot of it is drainage coming off the Mass Pike, a couple of drainage swales, but nothing, no major stream crossings, they're pretty straightforward.
Yeah, no, we have a letter from the Conservation Commission, they just request that they get notified when the activities begin, okay?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and that's one of our conditions anyways, to notify the DPW Director, too.
Yeah, so before I came to this meeting, I did send him a copy of the cutting plan as well, I never heard from him besides that.
Yeah, we don't have anything from him, but.
Okay. This is my first timber sale in town, so I don't know the process that well.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, we usually.
Oh, thank you.
Are those the conditions?
Yeah, I had read through these. So one thing I didn't understand is the, is the bond changed depending on what the Director says of DPW, or is it just this $5,000?
It's just the $5,000.
Okay, all right, I didn't know if that changed based off of his.
Yeah, no, that's.
Okay. So if I understand correctly, there's a $10 fee tonight?
Yes.
At some point?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, and then, so we just need to, before the operation starts, we get a, we get a, the logger will get a, I haven't put this out to bid yet, I was trying to get all the permitting side of it done, and then I'll put it out to bid to loggers, they need to come in and get a $5,000 bond?
Yep.
With the DPW Director, do they go directly to them, or it come to the town, or?
I believe it goes to the finance.
I'm coming with.
Finance Director.
Yeah, which is the town, yeah, okay. Which is the DPW.
Got it.
Yeah, because we've got the times down there and checking with the.
Yeah, so who, the school bus, so I should contact somebody about the school bus?
Yeah, you can call the, well, the town barn, that's, Wendy McRoy's the one you would speak to, and she can tell you.
Yeah, the sort of buses there.
Wendy?
Wendy McRoy, yeah, and she can tell you the schedule.
Got it.
Okay.
And I should submit the timber harvesters, I'll have them submit the timber harvester license?
Yeah, before, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and there's no one from the public to ask questions or comment, so any more questions or comments from the board? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Can I have a question?
Oh.
I'm not the public.
Oh, no.
How long will your activity go?
It's a tricky question, because it depends on the type of logger, type of operation the logger runs. If it's just a man with a chainsaw and one machine, so small scale, it could take several months. If it's a larger operation with mechanized equipment, it could, it could be done in less than a week, so it's a really difficult question, if I.
How about, I guess the issue would be in the spring, or, you know, summer, you might have much more wetness, there you might have some issues.
Yeah.
During the winter, you're frozen, so it's great.
Right, yeah, so we're going to shoot for frozen or dry, I'm hoping to get it done this winter, and if I had to guess, it's not a lot, it's not a large timber sale, it's a smaller volume, so it may be more towards the less mechanized side, but I'm hoping not for like a chainsaw skidder type of operation, because it does take so long, makes the job more tricky, so I'll say around a month is what I'm hoping, probably less than that, yeah, it's usually pretty quick, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, is someone willing to make a motion to approve forest cutting plan?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Let's see. Okay, you're all set, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a nice Christmas.
All right, you, too.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
I have a chat with Towne Sturbridge.
Okay, back to old Mike.
Oh, old business. We, with regard to Sturbridge Auto Sales, we had requested from Trooper Lawrence that he get back to us, and it was, I just want to ask if he has gotten back to us, and if he has not, could we contact him and remind him that he had promised to get back to us on the safety issue?
Right, I know, he hasn't gotten back to us.
But I can reach out to him.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
No, that's it.
Okay, Mary?
Old business. I just wanted to bring up the town council, the two issues that they were working on, Ted, and I know it's the holidays, but they should at least be able to give us an indication of when they'll be able to do it. The two things I'm referring to is Mike's request to find out what, if anything, we can do to look into the Shepherd parcel in terms of active recreation now that there's CRs on it. Even if there's nothing we can do, they need to let us know that in writing. And the other thing was, and I think I had shared it with the board before the special events, not special events, before our special town meeting, that Rebecca looked online, and apparently this conservation restriction was placed on all of the Plimpton property, even though there's a section of it that was specifically earmarked to active recreation at town meeting. And she looked into it and saw that the CR was drafted properly, it didn't restrict active recreation on the portion that was set aside for that, but apparently, she said that when it was filed with the Registry of Deeds, that it's on all of it, and I think Mary was there when Tom Chamberlain had said it. And I want to make sure he's not confusing, we have a lot of open space issues, but I know we went back and forth a little bit, because he had said, oh, you've got to go back to town meeting, that's the Shepherd parcel, there's no reason to go back to town meeting on Plimpton, because that's the way the town voted on that. So somebody made a mistake.
And I have spoken to him, and I.
No, I know you have.
Clarified it.
You definitely did, but.
And they have somebody in their office, Clarice, Clarice, I think it's Clarice, who's working on that, but I can follow up and ask.
Well, just even if they say, you know what, we should have some kind of correction or answer by January 15th, you know, just some kind of deadline, instead of having it up in the air.
I'll be having to follow up.
Yeah, they may have to record a corrective document or something like that.
Doesn't seem like it's a big deal.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Famous last words.
It's like the state with the licorice.
Yes.
And I guess you should talk to Rebecca, I didn't totally understand, apparently, the state.
I hadn't spoken to her, but go ahead.
Okay, was made with the Hines property, too, which I don't totally understand that one.
I mean, has a third one now?
Ask, ask her about that, that some kind of CR was placed where it shouldn't have been, or, I'm not totally clear on that one, but Rebecca seemed to know what she was talking about, so.
Okay.
That's my only old business.
Okay, I have no old, new, Priscilla?
I do, I had a couple of people ask me about Meet the Selectmen, and they said it kind of like fell through the cracks after a while.
Nobody showed.
I, you know, they asked to bring it up, and so I said I would, I don't know, were you interested in doing this again? I mean, I don't mind doing it.
I never minded doing it.
No, I don't either, I don't know what happened, it just kind of stopped.
Well, because people didn't come.
Yeah.
The last time Mary and I did it together down Common.
On the Common.
Her husband, her husband showed up.
I did one on the, on the library.
Probably wanted to know when are we going to dinner or something. Yeah, I mean, if there's attendance, but we also, I agree with Mary.
I know, I do, too, but.
If people will go to the library, definitely, we could go in twos or individually, or.
Do we try it after New Year's?
I was going to say after the first of the year.
Yeah, try it after New Year's.
Maybe we have a more active population again. Probably have more things going on again.
There seems to be more interest in a lot more things, so maybe this will help. The other thing, I had another request, Ted, your hours, can they be posted online? People would like to know when they can come see you.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, because I didn't know, they asked me, and I did not know your hours.
Sometimes it depends upon holidays and that sort of thing, but I could post the normal hours.
You could just say, "Normal hours, subject to change," whatever, I mean, it doesn't, just to give people an idea.
Sure.
And can we reinstate the liaisons to the different departments, like the FinCom does?
Well, the FinCom is a little bit different, because they really need the financial information from the departments. The reason the Board of Selectmen had liaisons goes back to when there was just a secretary.
When I first came, they were there.
Oh, yeah, because it hung on, and it hung on, but once we got a town administrator, that's the town administrator's job, the day-to-day, and working with the department heads. At one time, like I know Sam Puckett used to be the liaison to the Highway Department when Sam was Highway Superintendent, and he would talk to them and discuss the budget and bring it back to the Selectmen, but it's totally changed, we don't do it that way anymore. Any department head, you know, could approach any Selectmen for anything, but, you know, it depends on what it is, just like any citizen could, but I've usually directed citizens, you know, if there's a major problem, to the town administrator, and department heads, you know, sometimes just have a question, and it's easy to answer, but we don't have that oversight of their budgets and stuff, that the liaisons are really necessary. Unless we want to go back to the old days, and the Selectmen used to carry guns.
Yeah.
You don't?
Oh, let's not go there, Priscilla, right? Okay, anything else under new, Priscilla?
No, that's it.
Chase?
No new, thank you.
Mike? Mike?
No new. Ne- ne- na- na- na.
I just have one new, and this is like, no rush on it. I know a lot of people don't rely on Wikipedia, but our Wikipedia is unbelievably behind. I don't know if somebody, Kevin, or somebody who handles, for example, under Town Administrator, it has Luna Lynn Baker.
What?
Am I under the wrong one?
You must be.
Center Meeting House, Worcester County, no, I, and I was going to ask Mary, when was she ever, that was long before I was involved in town government.
I never heard that person.
No, okay, I only go as far back really as Jim Malloy, I know you go a lot further back. I'm definitely on Sturbridge's.
There's a lot of inaccuracies.
There's just some incorrect information, so.
It's always on Wikipedia.
I know, but some Wikipedias are a little more accurate than this. So, I mean, because the population's at 9,268.
That's not too far off.
Correct. So, I mean, it doesn't help us that some of it is kind of accurate, and then we have this Luna Lynn Baker.
What site is this?
This is Sturbridge's Wikipedia.
We have a Wikipedia site?
Well, it's really strange, it's just been updated, and I was telling Shanae the trouble I was having trying to get onto the calendar, you know, I had to click three different places, and I did know it said Sturbridge Wikipedia, but I just thought it was information in the big Wikipedia. I didn't know we had.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I guess maybe we want to wait until we have a permanent town administrator at this point, because in January we'll have one, we'd want to put you down, but it's just something to keep on our radar.
Well, we still get things addressed, Sean.
Right. Okay, so that's, this is a total, there's no such person.
No.
Affiliated with town as Luna.
We had Pat.
Luna Lynn, it sounds like a southern.
Can't think what her name, Pat, Pat Whalen.
Mm-hmm.
But no.
Okay, no Luna Lynn.
Never even heard that name, yeah, Luna.
Sounds, no.
Okay, I don't have any other new.
Okay, under new, which I probably should have brought up, under Public Service Announcements, we got that letter notification from the library that one of the library trustees died, so they need to fill the position, so we really have to advertise for it and have a joint meeting.
Is it, is it like the position?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, it would be a joint meeting.
Yeah, and it's only till the next election, but it's a joint meeting, so we can put that up on the website, and I'm sure they probably already posted it at the library. That's too bad. Okay, that's all I had under new. Correspondence, Mary?
November 19th from National Grid, mass electric rate case has been filed with the Mass Department of Public Utilities. November 19th from the Commonwealth, congratulation letter from Governor Baker regarding Sturbridge completing the best practices of community compact. November 19th from the Commonwealth, notification that Sturbridge has been awarded a Sustainable Materials Recovery Program Grant Award.
Okay, and that was kind of interesting, that's for the collection of mattresses. So much money for a bin, and, of course, the National Grid naturally is, they request to increase their rates. Okay, anyone else have any communications?
The amount of the municipal grant for, for mattresses is $7,500?
Oh, that's for the bin, I think the total thing was $15,000.
Okay.
Something.
That was nice.
Yeah, it's always nice when you get grant money. Okay, approval of minutes. Okay, we have the minutes of November 19th.
I have a few changes.
Yeah.
I expect there are, I was on a lot of cold medicine writing those.
Oh, no, and I apologize, you sent them to us, and normally I like to tell you ahead of time, and I actually didn't this time, so I apologize. On page two, under the bold heading, continuation of Class II license hearing, Robert Cassum, the third chap, the third chap, the third paragraph that says M. Dowling stated, regarding the Vermont Title Circumvention, I want to put a capital with the T and the C, that's a little thing, though, because, insert, as alleged by the officers in our earlier BOS meeting, period. Okay? And then the next sentence starts, and wondered, scratch that and put she questioned instead, and then the sentence continues, while the only charges brought against Art Cassum were regarding his bookkeeping, put a period there and scratch, and now what happened with the titles? I would scratch that, and then I would like one sentence added at the end of that paragraph. Oh, I'm sorry, am I, am I going too fast?
I'm trying to keep up.
Okay, so you're just changing it to she questioned instead of and wondered. Okay, and then you're scratching the rest of that sentence that says, and now what happened with the titles?
Okay.
Okay, and now you're going to add kind of a long sentence, so I'll go slowly. Okay. M. Dowling stated that the officers were under a duty to inform the BOS that no law had been violated since the BOS vote was premised on the officers' plural assertions that Art Cassum's practice of having vehicles inspected in Vermont violated mass law. That's it.
Shanae, on that same page, under meeting with Senator Gobi and Todd Smola, that last sentence, I'm sure Mike picked up on it, too, it doesn't, it's not complete.
It's not.
Says M. Supnott, state funding for Chapter 90 regarding roads and public transportation.
Okay, I'll take a thought.
So, Mike, you know what you said?
Yeah, it, I was, it should probably say, M. Supnott recommended, and we discussed $300 million a year funding for Chapter 90 regarding road maintenance, and $88 million per year funding for public transportation. Specifically discussed keeping those levels of funding.
Okay, I just have a little one on the top of page three, second line of the sentence, it had begun, if new charges are brought forward, the board will be having another hearing regarding, okay, so just add in, after forward, the board will be having.
New hearing.
Anything else from the board?
New hearing.
Okay, is there a motion to approve, is amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 5 to 0. Okay, Citizens Forum?
No Citizens, a packed house. Sorry. We haven't had a Citizens Forum in a long time.
No, we need a controversial issue.
Let's wait.
Yeah, I know. In the spring, they'll be coming out.
Spring's nice.
Yeah, okay, next on the agenda, we have a request for an executive session.
Let me read. I move pursuant to Mass General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss police contract negotiations, where the Chair of the Board of Selectmen declares that discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the position of the town and the approval of minutes.
So moved, and also add, we will not reconvene in open session?
And we will not reconvene in open session.
Second.
Any discussion? Priscilla?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Yes.
My vote, yes.
She's here, I know I saw her earlier.
Yeah, I think you went into the area.
I just want to spend a minute with you folks, and we can bring, I just want to kind of review quickly what I gave you, in case you have any questions.
The way the grounds work.
Been happy to have she come in.